Good morning. It is now nine o'clock, and I ask that you would please stand to join me for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Father God Almighty, we just thank you for this day that you have made. We ask for your wisdom, your guidance, and all that is done today. We ask again, as we continue in a new year, a new decade, that you will just furnish your wisdom, your answers, your solutions, miracles, signs, and wonders that is going to be acted upon by this Board of Commissioners, that is going to be supported by the staff, but it is all for your people who are the citizens throughout Henry County. We again just thank you for a great year of prosperity for our citizens, but more importantly, peace and safety. We do ask, Lord God, that you just bless this United States of America with peace and joy, and we pray that same prayer for this world. And all that agree in the name of Jesus Christ, please say amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning again. Joyful new year, and we're glad to see you all here and those that are watching online. So at this time, I'm calling this year's Board of Commissioners meeting for January the 7th to order. We do have a couple of announcements regarding the agenda. The following planning and zoning item, which was RZ 1922 by the Reservoir Group requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to residential suburban for property located at 1555 Chambers Road in District 2, has been postponed. And also, Item 7 regarding the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement in Excellent in Finance Reporting has been removed from the agenda and will be postponed to a future meeting. Are there any other revisions or suggestions to the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open to accept the agenda with those modifications.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comment or discussion? All in favor? Okay, the agenda is accepted unanimously. We're now going to invite up Mr. Harold Cooper, who is our Human Resources Director, in the recognition of our Henry County employees for their years of service awards, and we're looking forward to recognizing those employees. So, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Board Chair.
Good morning, distinguished board members. It's an honor to stand before you today to recognize employees for their longevity and tenure with our organization. Their undying commitment to serve this great community is a testament to their dedication to this great county that we call Henry County. So, at this time, I would like to honor those employees with 20 years of service, 25 years of service, 30 years of service, and 35 years of service. We're going to start with our 20-year employees. Mr. Kent Bateman, DOT foreman. Ms. Jennifer Bryan, Clerk's Office, Courthouse. Bryan. Ms. Barbara Harrison, Clerk of Superior Court. Ms. Sue Wainwright, Police Department. Ms. Officer Felicia Henley, Henry County Police. Lieutenant Michael Hopegood, Henry County Police. Sharon Mitchell. Captain Jeff Poole, Henry County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Jody Powell, Henry County Sheriff's Office. Officer Steve Frugole, Police Department. Detective Lieutenant Keith Schumay, Henry County Police Department. Johnny Barclay, Department of Transportation. Johnny Holland, Department of Transportation. Sharon Grunau. Mr. Vince Farrell, Animal Control. Ms. Pat Delp Boy, GIS. Ms. Sally Ann Horr, Senior Services. Ms. Audrey Thomas, E-911. Ms. Carolyn Morgan, Commissioner's Office. Ms. Michelle Rowley, Department of Transportation. Mr. Harold Hogan, Fleet Services. Ms. Stefani Smith, Tax Assessor's Office. Ms. Charlotte Allen, E-911. Ms. Rhonda Ritchie, Henry County Police Department. Sergeant Ron Patton, Henry County Police Department. Sergeant Kenneth Turner, Henry County Police Department. Ms. Michelle Lunsford, Lead Operator, E-911. Captain Jeffrey Maddox, Henry County Police Department. Mr. James Mann, DOT. Chief Thomas McLean, Henry County Fire Department. At this time, we would like the Board of Commissioners, if possible, to take a picture with our 20-year tenured employees.
Okay, and what we will do, Board, we'll stand here so that we can stand, if you'll come here synchronized together, and we'll just ask our... This is half of our employees, it almost seems like, but congratulations to you all, especially for your 20 years of service. So, thank you.
We will continue now with our 25-year service employees. Assistant Chief Fire Department Richie LaCroy. Lieutenant Mark Healy, Fire Department. Mr. Don Ash, Director of E-911. Fred Leonard, Fire Department. Lieutenant Mike Cone, Henry County Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Mike Keigho, Sheriff's Office. Officer Joey Smith, Police Major. Major Jason Bolton, Police Department. Ms. Amelia Ash, Building and Planning Supervisor 2. Lieutenant John Harper, Henry County Sheriff's Office. Ms. Terry Taylor, Supervisor of Clerk's Office of the Courts. Ms. Diane Reed, Director of Senior Services. Ms. Susan Howington, Henry County Extension Services. Ms. Pamela Taylor, Henry County Code Enforcement. Ms. Angie Saroff, Budget Director. Mr. Michael Cash. Investigator Solicitors Office. And Police Chief Mark Amerman.
Your directors on...
All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
William, thank you all for your 25 years of service. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to present the 30-year service employees. Ms. Lynn Foreman, State Court, Holman, State Court, excuse me. Ms. Renee Cochran, Tax Commissioner's Office. Mr. George Patchett, Henry County Police Department. Battalion Chief, Mr. Barry Cooper, Henry County Fire Department. Mr. Jeff Shetfield, Fire Department. Chief Harry Sherwood, Henry County Fire Department. Major Jeff Norman, Henry County Sheriff's Office. Detective Tom Scott, Henry County Police Department. Mr. Calvin McClendon, Stormwater Manager. Captain Mark Spratlin, Henry County Fire Department. And Mr. Ernest Duffy, Foreman at Department of Transportation.
Okay, Board, if we will still again take convene four pictures here, thank you.
All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you all for your 30 years of service.
Last but definitely not least, our 35-year service employees. Chief David Foster, Henry County Sheriff's Department. Sergeant Denise McBroom, Henry County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Bobby Elroy, Department of Transportation. And Mr. Larry Miller, Department of Transportation.
We'll come down this time, and we'll definitely recognize this group, and then after this, we'll move definitely into our retirements with Mr. Brad. We're going to come down on this.
All right. On the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
All right, as Mr. Johnson is coming, we definitely want to thank all of our employees on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for your so many years of dedicated service. We also thank you to your families as well, for we know that without you, you are unable to do what we do for our citizens. So again, we do not take you for granted. We say thank you, and again, appreciate your many, many years of service. So, thank you all. Let's give them all a round of applause as they all exit. So we will now have the recognition of our Henry County employee retirees, and we'll ask Mr. Brad Johnson to come and announce those retirements for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and a Happy New Year, as we bring in a great 2020. It's always great in the morning, or any morning, to recognize our great team members of Team Henry, and everything we do every day for Henry County is, would not be possible if not for the men and women of Henry County staff that dedicate their life to the citizens here in Henry County. So we do appreciate them. And we're moving to our next section of recognition, is we have five retirees in December that we want to recognize today. The first being Steve Copeland, 29 years, Henry County Fire Department as a shift commander. We have William Wickson, Henry County Sheriff's Department, 26 years. We have Tommy Dodson, 16 years of service. Is Tommy in? Tommy, Tommy, Tommy. Yeah, Tommy, come on up. I couldn't, didn't see him there hiding. And Ray, is Ray Russell... Come on, Ray, I see Ray. Y'all come up at the same time. We also have Rebecca Russell, who couldn't be here today, with 12 years in the Tax Commissioner's Office. But the two that's here today, I would like to say a few things about them, and Tommy and Ray. First with Tommy, his 16 years started as a Henry County Residential Inspector, and during the recession time, he moved to the position of Splice and also served some time in Stormwater, before eventually returning back to the Building Department as a wealth of knowledge for our building team, building permitting team, where he's now retiring with that 16 years of service. Ray B. Russell, I've known Ray for a long time. He's had several stints here in Henry County, or a couple, but he started back in 1996 with the original Henry County Police Department as a police officer, and later detective, during that, the first regime of police departments of the first round. He later returned to Henry County Sheriff's Office in 2009 as a deputy, transferred to the DA's office as an investigator in 2011, and in 2017 was promoted to Chief Investigator. Both of these gentlemen, plus the other members that are retiring from Henry County, will be a wealth of knowledge, they will be missed in our day-to-day operations. So, we want to congratulate them, get a picture with the board, and I do have two little small tokens of appreciation from us to them for their service to Henry County and the citizens. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Join us for a picture, please. Thank you. you the very best in the next phase of your lives, and again, thank you for your dedication and service to Henry County and our citizens. So we will now again note that Item 7 has been removed from the agenda, so we'll now move into Item 8. And as many of you are aware, every year, we rotate the Vice Chair's position of the Board of Commissioners by district, and this year, it is time for our Commissioner Dee Clemens to serve as Vice Chair. And so at this point, we will now accept a motion to appoint her as the Vice Chair. And so the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And we did note that in that vote, all voted in Commissioner Clemens abstaining. Okay, so thank you for that. All right, so we will now move into our County Manager comments, and we'll invite up our County Manager, Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews, to present her comments and updates.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members, and again, Happy New Year to everyone. It's certainly exciting at the beginning of the year to recognize those employees who have been with the county for 35, 25, you know, 20 years. That's a lot of service, and a lot of institutional knowledge that we've been working with. And so again, we want to congratulate those employees for their years of service, and hopefully all of us can at some point stand here and be recognized for 25 and 30 years of service. This morning, Brad is going to be tag teaming with me. I'll be giving some comments to the board, but then Brad will be giving some updates on our public safety, and then I'm going to have Don Ash come forward and brief the board on the Census Committee here at the county, and just give some updates to the board. It's hard to believe that we are in 2020, but we are getting ready to kick off our fiscal year 21 budget cycle. It feels like we just completed our budget, but believe it or not, we're at that process again. This morning, I will provide to you all the budget letter that will go out to all of the respective departments, all of our elected officials, and our constitutional officers today, which outlines our budget calendar. One of the things that we're going to do differently this year, because we heard loud and clear from the board that you all wanted to be a part of the process, is to allow each department not only to meet with our budget team and county management team, but to spend some time with our Board of Commissioners in some working meetings, and present their budgets to you all as well. So we'll afford you all not only an opportunity to see what is initially presented to the county management team when we start going through determining what our needs are versus what some of our wants are, but it will also give the board an opportunity to really recognize what you're voting on when we're determining what that budget's going to look like. So just be on the lookout in the next couple of months, and you will have a calendar so that you can go ahead and plug those dates in for when those meetings will be held, so that each board member will have an opportunity to hear from every department and/or cluster leader regarding their budget requests. One of the most important parts of our budget is to also have a capital improvement plan, and as you all know, we did talk through, last year, a number of conversations were held in terms of what needs to be a part of that capital improvement plan. One of the things that we will do this year is include that in our budget process, because depending on the type of financing that we're going to use, we'll need to make sure that we have that budgeted. And so be prepared for some conversations in terms of what that will look like. I'm pleased staff has worked diligently over the last couple of months in identifying not only the capital projects, but looking out for five years, what it will cost us in the next five years, to make sure that we have a vehicle replacement plan in place, to make sure that we have capital projects that are big projects, that we have the funding in place, and to take care of some of our facilities that need some work done to them. So those are some of the things that you'll need to be on the lookout in the next couple of months. Also, I will tell you all that we do have an upcoming Employee and Family Health Fair that's going to be scheduled for Saturday, January 18th, at Heritage Park. It will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that is for every county employee and their family. Over the last couple of months, we've had some meetings with our health insurance providers, and one of the things that they've talked to us about is that our claims are continuing to go up, but our claims are not going up as a result of our employees, it's dependents. And so what we want to do is reach out to dependents, making them aware of resources that may be available. We'll have blood pressure checks there, we'll have activity trucks there, food trucks, all healthy-type foods, hopefully, but we will make sure that we open it up to everyone so that they'll have an opportunity to understand some of the resources that are available for our employees. And then finally, at the end of this week, be on the lookout for an update from Health Stat. I will start sending out the monthly reports to you all, so that you all have an idea of what our numbers are looking like in our health clinic. I can tell you, during the month of December, they were completely booked, because a lot of employees have suffered from upper respiratory infections, to a number of us, including our own Deputy County Manager having the flu. And so we definitely want to make sure that our employees recognize that the facility is available, and again, remind our employees that it is open for not only employees, but for their dependents as well. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson, who will provide an update regarding public safety.
Cool, again, good morning, Commissioners. This morning, I would like to bring some highlights from our public safety team. First one regarding the holiday season. As you might have, we had complaints last year, especially at Jonesboro Road Shopping Corridor, about crime. This year, we're happy to say that Chief Arman, through... This year, we're happy to say that Chief Airman, through Officer Snook and his new position and taking on that task force to have more deterrent crime, we're looking at like one car break-in and, and very minimal crime in that area compared to, it's about a 300% reduction than last year. It's amazing what the, what the guys did, being vigilant and just putting resources there and actually putting out the message that if you steal in Henry County, we'll catch you and, and not going to ruin the holiday season for our citizens. And I want to commend them for that. As you've seen, if you came through the front door this morning, the Bearcat that you guys approved about six months ago is arrived this week, which is going to be a great assistance to the safety of our personnel. Not only that, that's just some superficial type of a vehicle, but also just as important is the communication equipment that they did not have, that you guys approved six months ago for their SWAT team, to have inner communications built into their gear, which is huge and not have just the radio communications. That was definitely lacking some sustainability. And the third thing that you guys approved six months ago is their night vision that's arriving this week. So, basically, due to your actions, providing a safer, better response, better equipped response to handle our issues in Henry County internally. We also had six new police recruits sworn in over the last, since the last commission meeting and 16 new firefighter EMTs graduated the academy that hit the streets last Monday, which definitely is bringing our numbers up and definitely decreasing the number of open positions we have in our public safety team to maximize our response capacity all the way around. I do want to have, do a quick shout-out to Lieutenant Stuart Smith. As you know, fire EMT and instruction are classes 52 weeks total. Just when they get, when you get hired, you go to 50 weeks before you can even go to a fire station. And part of that's the National Registered EMT Advanced Course that we do in-house at our own academy. And the average state pass rate for an EMT student on first round is about 54%, 54%. And consecutively now, Lieutenant Smith and his team of instruction advanced EMTs has had 100% pass rate on first round. That's the national level testing. So, that's a big deal, huge for our team of instructors there and just especially him as the lead instructor. I want just a quick shout-out for them and what they do every day and what they've done to produce the, the great quality of public safety team members we have in Henry County. And lastly, but not least, is our number one update is for our radios. We have some dead issues in the county and in issues, we've had a twofold response or fix. The first one in the north of the county, we have some dead spots. We're putting some small cell radio, a small cell system to be repeated from our existing large towers. They're in the process of being installed. Couple of meetings ago, you guys approved us relocating our tower from our Hampton Fire Station area to a memorandum of understanding with Hampton City on our public works and increasing 150 feet in size of the tower to get our west side coverage increased. We've also incorporated the LTE system in our portable radios. So, if you have a public safety officer, police fire deputy, if they don't have a radio coverage or something happens, they get this out of a structure, it'll swap over to their device, LTE, and have coverage all the time. That communications is definitely one of the most crucial things we have and we've, we've got to have a great communication grid for, for our systems. And we're working on it hard and the public safety team is working together to make sure we have a full-covered grid to keep our personnel safe. So, we'll take any questions, but that's our public safety update.
Okay, I have a question or two, but are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Going back to County Manager, Ms. Matthews, when you made the statement that we're getting prepared for our budget for the 2021, last year, in my opinion, we made it through it and we got through some things, but we struggled quite a bit, okay? And that's my opinion. That's not everybody's opinion. My question is, and I think one of the reason that was so, we did not have a financial strategy with guiding principles. People submitted their requests, some just looked at what they spent the year before, some looked at turingans, some made projections of growth. But in the letter that goes to your departments, there should be a statement, a financial, financial strategy statement with guiding principles to support it, to help whoever submit their budget, check themselves to see if they are submitting what's really needed for the overall county. And I want to invite you to please look at having that available this year, not only to come to us, but to them. So, when they are making their requests, they should be able to look at that principle, I mean, look at that strategy and those guiding principles to see if it's in alignment with where you all have looked at we're going. And if not, that budget needs to be restructured from the department up. So, would you please consider making that happen so that struggle won't be here this year? And I know I had maybe 200 questions or more, what is this for, why is this here? And they struggle to answer those questions. And that really goes back to the fact, that process was not there as a checkpoint to say, this is where your budget should take you to be concise with where the county is going, okay? So, that's one thing I want to ask you to please, make sure that's a part of your presentation by department and what should come before us. The second thing you mentioned about the healthcare or the health, Henry cares and that our claims are going up because of dependents. I have a used facility, I love it, I think it's a great thing for employees. But what I noticed is, one of the reasons is the hours. Dependents can't get here the hours that is open. It closed very early, it's not open on Friday, it's not open on Saturday, it's not open on Sunday. And working moms normally try to take their children to and fro to the doctor either after work or on Saturdays. And now, some pediatricians are open on Sunday. So, it could very well be because of the hours that we have it open, dependents or working moms cannot get there with their children and would like to get there. I have a dependent, well, she's working until five something in the afternoon. So, she hasn't been able to take advantage of the services that are there. But I think if you look back and say, wait a minute, we're closed all day Saturday, we're closed all day Sunday, I think it's four o'clock that they close. They close at four o'clock in the afternoon. Well, working moms who are our employees don't have the opportunity to get off to go get their dependents, to bring them there. So, if you will, look at the hours of operation and see if that could be a way or catalyst to get some of those other dependents into the services that we have available.
Thank you. Okay. I don't know if you want to respond, but I, if you want to hear from the board first and then come back.
Oh, that's fine, whatever your preference is, Sharon. I can either respond or wait for all comments.
Okay, well, Commissioner Thomas, one of my comments related to the budget cycle as well, and one of the things that I'm hopeful for as we continue these meetings is we had a board retreat and we spoke about priorities and you are meeting with each commissioner as well. I think that as we continue that budget cycle, we need to communicate what those priorities are because I know sometimes it could go, you know, across the board, but you know, there's only so much and so much time.
It is.
That, that we have. So, I hope that again, we can, you know, you all can present back to us what you heard back from the board retreat and also the Board of Commissioners regarding priorities.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, this must be a part of your guiding principles.
Sorry.
I know you've had guiding principles before and so, but I, I do say that the budget cycle has improved every year.
So, I think you'll see, Madam Chair, what we're trying to do is, is it does have a place, and we are in the process of meeting with everyone due to holidays and some sickness. We missed, we're having to reschedule the ones we have not got, the one-on-ones with the commissioners with. We also have, if you see in the calendar, it does have the submission of the county budgets, the departmental budgets. It also has a place there. We have a retreat with the board one morning to go over the board's priorities on when it comes to budget. Once that's done, then it recalculates everything back together, then we have another budget workshop meeting a month later just to, you know, inform you guys what we don't want to do during the public hearing. We should be, you guys should know exactly what is in the budget and what aspects, your priorities as a board should be getting met for, for the county citizens and the operation of the county. So, that's what we are trying to help and what you guys can make on these days that we've set, we definitely would encourage and we'd like that cooperation with you guys.
And if you all will recall, the meeting that we held with the board, the two-day retreat back in November, the board identified some key priorities and those priorities will be incorporated within the budget. So, one of the things that Brad, myself, and the cluster leaders in our department heads have been doing is taking the strategies and the priorities that you all have identified, creating action items to actually correlate with that because that's how you develop your budget. You develop your budget based on what the commissioners have identified are the priorities for this upcoming fiscal year. So, the guiding principles, the goals, the mission, that will all be incorporated in the budget so that moving forward, we'll know what to expect not only from the board, but at least the department heads will also know what they're expected to do. And we will weigh that through benchmarks that we'll have in place.
And then, the other comment that I have is regarding public safety. Thank you for the continued focus on public safety. I know we went to that FEMA training up in Emmitsburg some while back and it seems like you all are continuing the focus, definitely adding more resources with our officers and firefighters, but the equipment needs and the communication channels. We just want to commend the team for that and continue to, if you will, just present us more stats about, you know, what is happening regarding crime prevention and things like that because I think that's news that our citizens definitely need to hear about, the good and the not-so-good as well.
We're working on, you're in report for all the departments now, so you guys see exactly where, what benchmarks we hit, make sure, and what challenges and opportunities we have in the future to do better.
Okay, very good. I think Commissioner Clement.
Sharon, I would just like to add that a large part of our budget process is connected to our millage rate. And I don't want us to forget about that because that seems to be the time that our citizens get in uproar because they don't understand the process. Last year, I asked that when public notices go out about the millage rate, which is directly connected to how we fund our budget, that we find out, and I guess this is for Patrick, what type of language can be added prior to the statement that we are planning to raise taxes, that this is just legal genre that we must put out about the millage rate increase based on whether we need to or not to meet our budget. If we can't put that out in the general notice, then I think that our internal media department needs to write the statements upfront so that people know, so that we're not sitting here during that process telling people, we're not raising taxes, but we had to put that message out. And you guys know exactly what I'm talking about. But we need to get ahead of that, especially when we start the budget process because people will come in and they'll talk about all these things that we need as a county, roads paved, lights, all of this, and they don't understand that we have a budget amount. And in order to get those things, then we have to be able to raise our millage rate to add those additional things to the taxes. So, I think educating our community, our constituents, and the public is going to be super important and we should start now so that it gives us something as elected officials to share with our constituents when they say that we're trying to raise the budget and they, they understand the process. So, I think that every conversation that we have, when we're talking about wish lists, that we talk about, this is our budget now. If we're increasing our budget by $20 million to meet these needs, that money has to come from a millage rate increase. And so, we need to be aware of that and we need to make sure that our citizens understand that.
Absolutely. And we will make sure that what we'll do differently this year is, once we determine what the number will look like, we'll have our financial services team, go ahead and show the board what the millage rate would be like. We can certainly look at what the current rate is and then by increasing it, what impact it will have because you're absolutely correct in that whatever your budget is, it drives what that millage rate number is going to be. And if we increase the budget, there is a strong possibility that it could result in us increasing the millage rate if we don't decrease other line items. One thing that you'll notice in the letter that went out or that will go out, it has not gone out yet, is that one of the things that we charge our departments with doing is looking at cost-saving measures. What can we do to reduce our costs that we're currently having on services so that we can take those reductions and put them in areas where we have some unmet needs? And so, all of that will, it'll be a very busy budget cycle, but I, I think that the board will be very pleased with understanding, one, what you're voting on, but two, so that when you're talking to your constituents, they understand that our budget is driven or the millage rate is driven by what the budget is.
But I think we have to be realistic in 2020 that Henry County has operated on a low budget for too many years already. When we talk about cutting and I hear people saying, you need to trim the fat, trim the fat, we're already behind. We didn't even pay our employees enough until last year. So, we need to think about and not put it out there that we need to be cutting departments and areas. It's all about the services that we provide to our citizens and I will not support cutting anything that drops our services. So, we need to be increasing so that we can provide better services because that's what our citizens are complaining about. They need more services, they need better services, they need better, you know, things in our county. So, we don't need, we need to trim where we need to trim, but we need to be careful talking about where we're going to cut and then cutting determines cost of services and cutting services. Okay?
Got it.
Thank you.
Sharon, would if you may, I want to go back to Commissioner Thomas's comment regarding the Wellness Center. She is absolutely correct. We have had a number of conversations with our provider regarding the hours of service. I've found that most of the time when I get sick is when the Wellness Center is closed and so, that is something that we are certainly working on. I think Mr. Cooper is still here and we have a conference call weekly with our providers. One of the things that we're trying to do is to get it open where we do have a Saturday that the facility is open and then we have a Friday because right now, the Wellness Center is closed on Fridays. And so, you're absolutely right, if we're going to open it up for those dependents, we've got to try to cater to the times that are most appropriate for them. So, we will report back to the board in terms of what that will look like. Right now, the contract that we have with Healthstat is based on the number of hours that are worked. And so, what was presented to the board was the current number of hours that they're working, I can't remember if it's, I don't want to misquote, but it's based on the number of hours. So, if we are looking to increase the hours, then that will be some additional costs that may be added. But we've talked internally about some other measures that we may be able to institute within our Wellness Center that will help to offset some costs in other areas. And so, we're going to work through that and then we'll certainly present something back to the board. The desire is to add additional hours and hopefully not have to add an additional cost for those hours.
Okay, are there any other comments from the board? Okay, all right, well, thank you for the update. I know Don Ash was going to come and present an update on the 2020 census.
Yes, and before Don comes, I do want to take the time to, I know the board has talked a lot about making sure that we filled a lot of our key leadership positions, so I do want to take this time to introduce Mr. Jonathan Penn, who has been hired and will be serving as our Parks and Leisure Services Cluster Leader. Mr. Penn comes with a wealth of knowledge and his first day was on yesterday and his first question to me is, do we have a parks plan? And so, I said, I know I've hired the right person because he is already on track in terms of making sure that we have plans in places. He's asked a lot of questions that I think the board has asked and so, I'm sure you all will be excited to sit down with Mr. Penn, let him know what your needs are. The money's still the same, so I did tell him some of the commissioners have a lot of priorities, but we're going to definitely identify what those priorities are and work through developing a county-wide parks plan so that we'll know from a budgetary standpoint what we need to start planning for, for our existing parks. So, Mr. Penn, thank you, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce him to the board. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ash.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys. Thank you to the county manager and her allowing me and Kayla Carrera to co-chair the Census Committee. We had our kickoff meeting yesterday and we're very excited. We're less than 100 days from April 1, 2020, which is Census Day. One of the things we talked about is, and what I feel a goal for us as a county as a whole, not to look at jurisdictional lines, but to look to count every person, every voice that matters in Henry County, regardless of economics, but every voice is important. The census drives so many things in our community, essential services, schools, funding for programs. So, my goal is to help by building a committee that represents our entire community to get every vote counted, to get every person counted. We had a great meeting yesterday, we had 40-plus participants, we actually invited 65-plus. We'll have our second meeting on February 6th and our goal is to educate, inform, and encourage everyone to take a part in the census program for Henry County. We had representation from one of the municipal governments and my goal is to take the Team Henry approach, that there's no jurisdictional lines because when you think of the census, Henry County is not only competing with the state, but we're competing with counties around us for those valuable dollars. Every person that's not counted in the census is dollars that Henry County lose. And our goal is to make sure that everyone is represented. I will reach out to you guys as well and involve you in the process, but we're very excited about the program and the work we've done with the program.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, well, we thank you for those updates and welcome Mr. Penn to the team and again, we look forward to working with you as well. We are now moving to our consent agenda and the items that we have are several. We've got the first one, which is a resolution from the Department of Transportation approving speed humps in Country Lake subdivision. We have a resolution as well from Connecting Henry approving the Family Connection Operating Grant for Connecting Henry from the Georgia Department of Human Services. In our displosh, we have several items, which is a resolution to In our displofs, we have several items, which is a resolution to authorize the acquisitions, and I won't read all of the details of them, but we've got all of those acquisitions which are regarding Village Parkway, West Village Parkway, Parcel 24, Parcel 26, Parcel 27, Parcel 30, and Parcel 35. Or does the board request any of those items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none here and none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
We have a motion.
Say.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the consent agenda is unanimously approved. We're now moving to our next item from Extension Services, and we'll invite Ms. Susan Howington, who's our Director of Extension Services, to come forward to present the resolution regarding a grant of additional funding for the Cooperative Extension Program. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I just have a few things to go over. I know you all have some things in your packets. See if I can get it going. We have a 4-H agent that has been in our department for over 20 years. She has had to retire, and so we are looking for a replacement for that. But in order to do that, we're also looking to try to be competitive with other counties, so we are asking to increase the salary for her part of it, for the portion to $15,000. She was making $13,374, and that's a difference of $1,626. The University of Georgia will also pay part of that salary, and that will be around $32,000. That includes their benefits. And so we are hoping to increase this salary so we can get the best candidate, but hopefully will also stay just like the folks here 20-plus years. Any questions?
Well, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, Susan. Looking at the summary report, it appears that this $47,000 is the base salary
Yes.
For the whole state of Georgia. So if we do this, it's going to bring us up even with the other counties.
Yes, it will.
Okay, that's all I have.
And then Commissioners, just for clarification, these positions are supplemental positions, and so the county is not responsible for that entire amount. The only thing that Susan is asking is for the county to increase their supplemental amount. So it's, if you look at it, the $32,000 is what the University of Georgia would pay, and then the $13,000 is what the county would pay, and then the additional amount, we're looking at, she's asking for a $1,600 increase to the supplemental amount.
Okay, and while you're speaking, I'll direct this point to the county manager. Will you also clarify how all of this took place regarding the salary and benefit classification study and why this is separate? Because again, we want to make sure that we're following the market study and why this is treated differently, if you'll elaborate on that.
Absolutely. So during the class and compensation studies, supplemental positions were not analyzed, and they were not included. And that's one of the reasons when this request came to the county manager's office, we had no objection to bringing it forward to the board, because we knew that that position had not been evaluated. And so this request definitely would get us in line with other counties of our same size in terms of salary, but it also will help Susan to recruit and get someone in at a salary that we think would be great for that position. And so again, it was not a part of the class and compensation study.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clement.
See, Susan, I have known of the programs that you guys have worked with the school system on, and I don't think the school system takes an active part in funding this, but they have a direct benefit from the programs. And I would like to definitely see with our new Parks and Leisure Person in place that we work more with our Parks and Rec and put some of these programs in our Parks and Rec program instead of us just, you know, working with the school system. And we're getting to that. I know we should have been there a long time ago, but having some new blood in our county Parks and Rec, we can definitely look at for the next fiscal year, especially since the county has a financial vested interest. Even though they're all our students, I would love to see this program in more of our Parks and Rec program, especially our parks that are agricultural parks.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. We have a motion, sounds like a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much.
That resolution is unanimously approved. So thank you, and thank you for your service as well. All right, we'll now move into our next item, and we're asking our Deputy County Manager, Brad Johnson, to present a warrant, be it for emergency response equipment, coming from the Financial Services Department.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners. A few months back, you guys approved the purchase of police vehicles for our Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and Fire Department. This here is phase two of that initial proposal, which included, this includes the equipment that go along with the cars, the lights and interior stuff. The next one you'll get next month will be the computers that will go into completely outfit. The cars have been ordered, they're on, it takes about six to eight months to get the vehicles in. Once they're in, this approval of this contract that will allow the outfitting. So if you'll see, it did go through September 17th, and it did go through the process. There's funds available through that process. Competitive bid number 20-22 was submitted. We had two proposals, and you can see West Chatham was the lowest proposal for the bid process for that equipment. Our recommendation is to award that, this contract to West Chatham of Savannah. It is Savannah, but they do have offices here locally in 1941 to handle our needs. Any questions?
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Here and none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
The resolution passes unanimously. As previously stated, item 13A regarding public hearing on planning zoning item RZ-1922 regarding a request for rezoning from residential agriculture to residential suburban in District 2 has been postponed. We're now moving to the next item, which is a public hearing item, and we're asking Mr. Stacy Jordan Rudisal to actually present an ordinance to amend parts of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code.
Good morning, Chair Wood, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This item before you is a request to provide clarification. There was a perceived conflict in our code regarding when a second entrance is required into a residential, single-family residential subdivision. Our Unified Land Development Code calls for a second entrance, which it describes as a continuously open point of ingress or egress from the existing street system if there are more than 50 lots in the single-family residential subdivision. The International Fire Code says something different. It has a threshold of 30 lots for fire road access. So it's actually different, but it's a perceived conflict. So this ordinance amendment before you today is to clarify that and to make it crystal clear that there is no conflict between our codes. The overhead shows in red the changes that we're proposing to this ULDC Code Section 80103-D2, and it would add a phrase that says, "Notwithstanding any conflicting code requirement, including without limitation, any contained within the International Fire Code or appendix thereof." I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
So Stacy, which one are we supporting? The one that we have or the 30 that the Fire Department International Code has?
It's actually not an either-or. This clarifies the 50-lot threshold for a continuously open public access point or a second entrance to the subdivision. The Fire Code after 30 may require basically an emergency access that's not open to the general public. So there really is no conflict per se, but this clarifies that there is no conflict. So we recommend approval.
I hear what you're saying, but if I was reading it and I was putting in a subdivision or development, I still wouldn't know which one to follow. Which one are we saying we're going to follow? Are we going to follow International Fire Code? Are we going to follow our section here in our Fire Code?
This shows that we're going to follow the ULDC 50-lot threshold, but that's not going to prevent the Fire Department from requiring an emergency access, maybe a knock-down gate or some space between lots to get a fire truck or other apparatus through after 30 lots. But this clarifies that a second entrance into a subdivision is only required after 50 lots.
But the Fire Department can make another request.
Yes, ma'am.
And if they make that request, the developer have to provide it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Clement?
I have concern about this, a lot of concern about it, because of the subdivision that we just tabled that was in District 2, that had to have the requirement of the two entrances. And clarify if I'm wrong, but this means that where before we required that they had to have two entrances, at this point, they can have an entrance that may not be paved, that may not be a real entrance, and that there could just be a gate that's wooded as long as the Fire Department has emergency access. Now, we have to think about what's the most extreme, because I would be very concerned about being in a subdivision with that 50 and one entrance in, one entrance out, and then that other entrance that used to have to be paved and a real entrance can now just be a gate-up, wooded, might not happen for another 20 years, and then the Fire Department can just tear that down. So what would we have as a commissioner if we're conditioning a subdivision like this to say, "We are going to require that they have that full entrance"? Would we still be able to do that? And if so, that needs to be real knowledge, because if we're not the commissioners that's here five years from now, 10 years from now, and this is in place, then we're still putting our citizens in jeopardy by not having a full entrance.
So if I can address that, Mr. Clements. Henry County has, to my knowledge, over the past 26 or 27 years, always applied the 50-lot standard for a second entrance, which is what this ordinance reaffirms. There was a recent amendment to the Fire, to the International Fire Code that said you should have a second means of access if it's 30 lots. So we're not changing anything that already exists, we're just clarifying that we view a second entrance as a second entrance, a paved road, everybody goes in and out. And that way, nobody's, nobody wonders if that Fire Code second entrance or that Fire Code access has to be a full paved access. So you, but to answer your question, you can still impose conditions. If there's a, if there's a 20-lot subdivision that this board thinks for some reason needs a second access, you could impose that as a condition of rezoning. If you have a 600-lot subdivision, and this board thinks for some reason it would be appropriate to have a third, fourth, or fifth access, this board could impose that as a zoning condition, just like any other condition. But this would apply to your basic, essentially a 40-lot subdivision, imagine one that's already zoned. I mean, that's, I think that's really what this addresses. If a property owner already has zoning, and they come to planning and zoning, or they come to plan review, they submit a plat for a 40-lot subdivision. They're not going to be required to have two full entrances. But the Fire Department could look at the layout and decide, "Look, we need an alternate means of access." It doesn't have to be a full entrance, it could be, you know, a back entrance, a construction entrance, or something like that. And that's, you know, the reason for that is, and I'm sure Commissioner Wilson can give examples, you know, a tree's down at the front of the subdivision, suddenly emergency vehicles can't get to the back. And the reason you would, the reason the Fire Department wants that access obviously is to get there. We don't need, you don't necessarily need the full-blown access in the back of that neighborhood, but you do need emergency vehicles to get in and out. And that's, that's what this ordinance clarifies. It really doesn't change anything, this is how it's always been, and it's just, just sort of clarifying the difference between a full access and the emergency access.
Okay, but even in the access, we're thinking Fire Department, but what about standoffs? What about police cars being able to get in? So I'm really concerned about that entrance being more than just, and I'll deal with those when those come before me for my district, you know?
Yeah, but this ordinance would authorize access. These, these emergency access or this alternate access is something that can be utilized by any government agency. Police could get back there. Utility companies would probably utilize it as well, you know, if you've got power lines down. I think most of the time, they're burying power lines now, but if for some reason you had a new subdivision come in, power lines were down, tree was down, the, you know, Georgia Power couldn't get to the back, they would utilize that alternate access as well.
Okay, let me go to Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner Barnes, okay?
So we currently have this type of setup at Haran Bay. On the, on the Trestle roadside, I think we have an emergency entrance for emergency services. So we already exercised this, so it just clarifies in the code, but we currently do this already.
Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas, then Commissioner Barnes, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Clements. Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, I'm very concerned about it, even though we're already doing it as a Commissioner Wilson stated. When you have a new commissioner, someone come up here, they won't know unless there's something there to say, "Well, do we need to have a second entry here?" You're leaving it up to individuals who may not have a construction background, definitely don't have a fire and police background, to try to make a decision about who needs to come in and out. And I think there needs to be some clarity here for the protection of the citizens. And if that road is a dirt road, or it is a gravel road, a fire engine or a fire truck may get stuck trying to get in that all police vehicle. And I would not want to put myself in a position not knowing enough about these, what the Fire Department needs to get in and out for caring for citizens, and say, "Well, the entry was dirt road, and the rain was caused a washaway, and they couldn't get in." To me, that's inexcusable. If and then we're going to have the second option, then it should be put in the code how that second option will be built, or something of that nature.
Hey, Commissioner Thomas, if I could just, I think this clarification, as I said, has been there in my years of doing it. It's basically, it's more for internal, we have conflict internal where we have turnover in personnel, where we might have one department saying, "We need 30," requiring a full-blown landscape, entrance, everything for anything at 30. So this is basically clarifying more for internal use that's been there, that 30 could require, again, our reviewers from planning and zoning, fire, review everything for safety reasons and that accessibility. But this will go ahead and make it clear that Henry County is using the 50 lots before the second total entrance, separate entrance is required for all citizens for travel, that's to be there. We've had some issues where 30, the number coming up with the new code change, it's been 30 on a recent request, has been used as a trigger point for that subdivision. Now, if it's a high hazard, high risk, yes, it can be modified. This just clarifies that in Henry County, if you hit the 50 target, you've got to have two separate entrances. Now, if you hit 30, it might be required during your risk analysis done at plan review that you might have to have a secondary emergency access that's not open to the general public, but it's not 30 as a number for general public access to have two open, open things. I think that's the clarification that we're, we're looking for, is that 50 is Henry County's number. However, it could be changed at any time during the plan review, during a risk assessment of plan review, to require, if it's over 30 by International Code, you can require a secondary emergency entrance. However, if it's a new, during that review or during the commission review for zoning, you can require anything. You can put any stipulation on there if you feel it's a higher risk at your level. But it is being reviewed for safety through our, through our plan review, both fire and plan and zoning. Hope that clarified a little bit.
Commissioner Clements, you done? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, I think this is more or less a cleaning up a controversial thing on the second entrance. And we've been operating with the 50, and I'm good with that. This other additional thing with the Fire Department, if it's 30 lots and they want to require a second entrance, will that be done before it comes to planning and zoning? Will that review take place before planning and zoning or after planning and zoning?
So there is a pre-meeting that we have. So there is a, a pre-meeting that we have once we receive rezoning requests, and the fire department has participated in these pre-review meetings, and they have made these comments. And I can assure you that they, they tell us that this section of the fire code will be followed. And also, as far as the, the, the materials for the, these emergency access, if you will, those materials, whether it's gravel or some other, they have to meet fire department approval. So I, I can assure you that there's not going to be any issue with that, but yes, Commissioner, there, there are pre-meetings. But as far as reviewing individual development plans, of course, that doesn't happen until after the zoning is approved.
So it, it goes through the pre-things you're talking about, and the fire department's going to request this second entrance for a thirty lot subdivision, that at that particular time, the commissioners are going to know about those recommendations, so if the zoning goes through, the commissioner can actually put those things in place, add a condition, even if it's thirty lots, or ten lots, or whatever.
Yes, sir.
They can add and say, well, we want a second entrance, and we can describe what kind. I, I think these second entrances ought to be some type of pavement, I don't think it ought to be gravel or anything. I think it ought to be road, it'll have to be the width of a regular road, but at least it ought to be to handle fire trucks, the weighted fire trucks, and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir.
That's just my comment.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Clemens?
I would just like to say that I think that Henry County should be using the most strenuous means of safety, and if, if IFC is more strenuous, because it is with thirty than fifty, I don't know why we would be increasing, we wouldn't even be considering fifty instead of going with the IFC code. It would be very difficult for me to vote on this without having the chief of fire here. I would really want to hear from the chief of fire to see what his input is on this, you know, what does he think about this? Because like Commissioner Barm has said, if he was up here, he was voting on it, he would know about this, he would know that there was a thirty or a fifty, he would know about IFC or not. And then he could just impose those conditions, but we're not going to always be here. And so I think that we have to set standards and policies for, even if we're not here, that people understand what's happening. So I would really like to hear from our fire chief, have a conversation with our fire chief about this, and seeing if we should even be doing the fifty, or if we should just, you know, go with the international standards, which is the most strenuous of safety for our constituents.
Yes, ma'am. And I can tell you that planning and zoning for a number of months has had conversations with Chief Black in the Fire Marshal's office, but I want to illustrate for you on the overhead, the International Fire Code, and this is Appendix D and Section Seven. And, and what it says is that when the dwelling units exceed thirty, which is our thirty lot threshold for the International Fire Code, then two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads will be provided. The ULDC, where there are thirty lot threshold, describes it as continuous, public, continuously open point of ingress and egress with our thirty lot trigger. So there really is no conflict, but we were just trying to clarify with this ordinance amendment.
Why do we have the fifty there then? Because this, what, this reads to me that if they have thirty-five, that Henry County won't require that they have it. If we, if they have forty, Henry County don't require they have, but when they meet that fifty, then Henry County requires they have it. So that means that they can skip the International Fire Code, which says thirty. That's what this ordinance says. Explain to me if this doesn't say that.
No, Commissioner Clemens and any board, I think we may be overthinking what we're asking the board to do. We're talking about an entrance and an access road. Those are two different things in terms of what that means. Right now, our Unified Land Development Code, which has been in place for a number of years, requires that anything over fifty lots requires a full blown entrance, meaning any vehicle can access that, and I hate to use access, but any type of vehicle can travel along that roadway. What this states is that you have to have an access road if you have more than thirty lots. And so what that means is that we're not ignoring the International Fire Code, but we're saying that if you're over thirty lots, you will be required to provide some type of secondary access, but it's not a full blown entrance. And so the problem we have right now is we have pending plans that are sitting in our building department, where planning and zoning is ready to sign off, but the fire department is saying, no, they've got to have a secondary entrance. It's not an entrance, it's an access road, and so all we're asking for is clarification, because if it's not that, then the board needs to amend the Unified Land Development Code, because the code currently says an entrance, not an access road.
But Sherri, if the fire department of Henry County that I respect tremendously is saying it should be an entrance, I'm not going to vote against that.
I don't think that's what they're saying. They're saying we have to have an access road, which is not how we define an entrance.
This is what this says, but our fire department is saying that access road should be an entrance. Is that what's happening?
Our fire department is saying that after thirty units, after thirty lots, there should be a secondary access road. What we're saying is that our Unified Land Development Code says that after fifty, it's an entrance. So we're playing with words. All we're asking the board to do is to clarify that fifty is for entrances. Now, if that's not the will of the board, then this is the time to amend it. If the board's intent is that we no longer want fifty to trigger it, and the board now wants it to be thirty, then this is the time for you all to amend the, the code to state that, that we're no longer going to require fifty, it's going to be thirty. Now, the challenge with that is every development that comes in and they're doing thirty lots, they may not have the ability to add a secondary entrance. It depends on the topography of the land, and those aren't things that the commissioners will be concerned with. When they go through our plan review stage, that's where our fire chief, or fire marshal, our engineers, they're going to look at it, and they may have a situation where on the thirty lot, where it's a really narrow lot, they may only have one way of getting a permanent or a full blown entrance, and then they may have some lots that they may have to give up, that may be that emergency access. But what we don't want is for every person that comes in, and they're doing a thirty-five lot subdivision, and they can't get that second entrance, they've got to come back to the board. And so we're just asking for some clarification. Please know that our staff, we do a due diligence with every applicant that comes through the door. If they're submitting a planning and zoning application, they have to do a pre-application meeting where everybody is involved, and at that beginning stages, staff will look and say, look, you're going to have thirty-five lots, and because you're on a highly traveled road, we may not be able to get access in, we're going to need some type of secondary access. So we're not going to ignore that. But I think the clarification that we need so that staff can go ahead and release the plans that are pending, is is the intent to have a fifty lot entrance, or a fifty lot access, or a thirty lot access road. So that's the clarification that we're asking for. I hope I haven't muddied it more, but that's what we're asking for.
No, I, I, I want to say thank you for the clarification in defining the entrance versus the access road, to also help us be reminded that there is a review process that includes fire, police, and anybody else that touches that development, and I think the key that I heard you say is that there's a risk assessment, that you're all determining based on that layout in that development, what is the safest things for our citizens. So I, I want to clarify for that. So I don't have an issue with what you're stating today, but I, I do agree that we do need to have these access roads as paved roads. I mean, because I think it could minimize the quality of that development, it, you know, just from a perception standpoint, if it's not, if it's gravel, if it's not paved, it is gravel, so I just think it needs to be of good quality. Okay, Commissioner Barm, I think you had something else to say?
Yeah, after listening to what Sherri says, I'm, I'm in support of this, and we move forward, and, and I guess, you know, maybe we could work on what kind of access road we're going to have for these thirty or ten. I mean, they could actually require, I guess, at ten lots if they wanted to. So with that, I'm, I'm good, and, and.
Well, this is a public hearing, so we definitely need to proceed now into the public hearing, where anyone wishing to be heard on this matter will have a total of three minutes each to speak, and so after the motion, then will the board make its vote. So at this time, we will now open this up to the public hearing, and anyone wishing to come speak for three minutes, you please do state your name and, and address, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Page, twenty-six, two six seven Fanning Lane in McDonough. Your plan as far as is like half proposed, because what if you have a developer that comes in and does thirty homes, forty homes on this particular section? Okay? And he decides to later on come back and do another thirty homes with another attached piece of property, and just add an extension to his road? He has now got, say, sixty lots, and he's only got one entrance, and only capable of getting one entrance, because he's landlord on the other side. So you've now got a development that exceeds what you're intending to, to prevent. What you need to do is, if it's at thirty lots, which is the national requirement by the safety people that are out there throughout the United States, not just Georgia, to say, you need two entrances, period. And make it that way, and that way there, at least you've got an entrance and an exit that is road proven and available to your accessibility of your equipment. You can't get an extension ladder down an unapproved road usually. There'll be trees, there'll be houses, there'll be some issue that'll be in the way. So make it a mandatory, what the national requirement is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Morey, forty-three Walker Drive. Case in point, forty-three Walker Drive, I had an entrance to five acres where my school is. You guys came along and says, can't have that entrance, onto Walker Drive, twenty-four foot, onto Walker Drive. Y'all said, you can't do that. We're going to close your school entrance, and we're going to make you go over to Klein Top and in it off of Klein Top. So you just did it, and you said, if you don't do it, we ain't going to give you a CO to operate. So you closed my entrance to my school that was already there, been there for twenty years. It was a Walker cotton farm. So you made me enter off of Klein Top. And then your illustrious Mr. Kelly, the, the fire marshal, he says that y'all got these valves that you put next to your, so that they can keep pressure on your buildings, and I had put it where the fire hydrant was, it went straight into the building. He said, no, you got to move it up after where your entrance off of Klein Top is. I said, Mr. Kelly, what if I gets blocked? I don't care, you're going to do what I told you to. I said, okay. So at that time, I got Mr. Mathis out there, who was the commissioner, chairman, and I said, all right, Mr. Kelly, if a fire truck pulls up there and hooks to that valve, and you have blocked the only entrance I got to that school, because that's what you said, this shows you the ignorance of what you're talking about. I said, if that truck that you made me put that valve there lets it burn one hair off of one of my children's hair, I'm going to take a gun and blow your brains out.
All right, Mr. Morey, please, let's be, speak to the board if you will.
I got the three minutes.
I mean, you speaking about guns and all that, let's speak, speak to the, the matter.
No, we talking about the, the valve shutting water off to the school.
Yes.
I'm trying to talk intelligence to you like he did. He said, if you build thirty houses on a road and it's got a cul-de-sac, and the guy, and y'all are doing it right now, I'll go show you four or five, where they go in and build another thirty houses and access that cul-de-sac, there ain't no two entrances. You don't listen to what people say, you just going to do what you want to do. Ignorance, there's no recipe for ignorance.
Well, thank you, so please stop, because we're not going to have any more derogatory comments in this chambers anymore. We're not going to have individuals calling individuals' names out. And we, this is a board of commissioners meeting, I ask that you do as the, the previous public speakers spoke, let's speak, speak to the issue, let's talk about the issue at hand, but let's discontinue name-calling, derogatory comments, and things like that. We've got business that we need to take care of, this is what this board of commissioners is all about, and I ask that we please do that in that order.
Thank you, Sherri.
So thank you. So our next person, if you have any comments, please do come, because we are here to listen to what you have to say regarding the matter at hand. Again, if anyone else wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward now. Thank you. Here and now, this concludes the public hearing. Are there any additional comments or discussion points? I see Commissioner Clemens, and then we'll go to Commissioner Barm.
Stacy, I would like to see staff change it for everywhere in this change, where it says more than fifty lots. I see it where it says amendment also applies the second entrance requirement to areas of a development across the street which contains more than fifty lots. I also see it down in Section eight point oh one where it says every subdivision with more than fifty lots. I want to change that more than fifty lots would say if it is fifty or more. That's a big difference, because that means if they're at fifty, they don't have to do it, because more than fifty, you know, I bring out my English major stuff. So that needs to be changed to fifty or more, not more than fifty, that's number one. And number two, it says that the continuous open points of ingress and egress, I would like us to define what that, what that ingress and egress should be, if it is standard for our roadside. If we can just clarify those things, then I can support this, but it shouldn't be more than fifty, because that means if they do fifty, they don't have to do it.
Okay, Commissioner Barm?
Yes, Stacy, one question came up, raised a good point with me, but I wanted to know, what kind of protection do we have if we've got a developer that comes in and he does fifty lots? And then he buys some more property, and he wants to add to the additional fifty lots, does the two entrances come to play in that, or does he get by with the one entrance?
So we would rely on that risk assessment that would be made at the time that the development plans are submitted, but if, as far as the fifty lots, if, if this is onto a public road, then that would, that would suffice. But if the risk assessment says something else, then they would have to provide a second emergency entrance. All of this comes into play.
Yeah. All right, let me rephrase my question and go back to forty-nine lots. We do forty-nine lots, he's got one entrance, and then he buys another fifty acres, and he wants to add on to the existing subdivision. Does the two entrances play in that, or can he get by with the one entrance?
No, sir, Commissioner Barm. What, what happens is for any development that comes in, whether it's fifty lots, forty-five lots, every time a new phase is constructed, they are still bound by the Unified Land Development Code. In a case like that, the plan review staff would deny the plans, and then that individual would have to apply for a variance through the Board of Commissioners to allow them to have an additional twenty lots with one entrance. And so there is a process in place that they would have to follow, but our, our staff would not just say, okay, because you've added twenty more lots, we're not, now not going to require you to have a secondary entrance. That's what the variance process would do. And then this board would have to determine if you all feel that there is some type of hardship, and typically variances are issued for hardships, if there's topographical issues that will preclude them from having that secondary entrance. Now, that still does not preclude them from having some type of emergency access. The fire department could say, you still have to have that emergency access, even if the board says, look, we're not going to require a secondary entrance. Fire could still come in and say, you're going to have to lose a couple of lots to be able to provide that secondary access. But to answer your question, they would still be required to provide that second entrance. Anything over fifty lots requires a secondary entrance.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Barm, because I have a subdivision called Traditions had that entrance where they only had to have one. Now, the builder is building another fifty seventy-five, and they're only required to have that one entrance. Why is it?
Where is that located, Commissioner Clemens?
Jonesboro Road. So this is why, I, I mean, I've had so many subdivisions in District Two over the last three years that I have really gotten some knowledge about this, and this is why I'm really skeptical about this, because they're getting another fifty to seventy-five to a hundred lots in there, and the builder's not being required to do a second entrance, because when they did it, when they voted on it ten years ago, they weren't required to have that second entrance. So now that they're coming back adding to that subdivision, based on what you guys have said, they should have been doing a second entrance, but they're not, so why? And I, I need to know that, because we, when we make this decision today, we need to be thinking about the commissioners that come on, because I sat in this seat, and I'm having to deal with the subdivision that's getting seventy-five more houses with one entrance.
So Commissioner Clemens, I will have to pull that plan from our building department, but the requirement is anything over fifty requires a secondary entrance.
So let's look at, we need to look at that policy, because some kind of way, this has slipped, and if we vote on this today, then we're allowing that same kind of stuff to happen. And I'm just saying, Stacy, I appreciate the staff, and I'm here to support you guys, because I know you know what you're doing, but we've got to look at some things, and we've got to look at what happened with Traditions then, why is it? Why is it that, you know, that developer was able to do that, and now the other phase is coming in, and the other phase is not triggering a second entrance?
All right, and what I'm hearing as well, Commissioner Clemmons brought up an interesting point. If we've got a policy, it's already been there, we just gotta make sure that we're following the policy, because that's really what you pointed out, that that community Traditions has been here and is developing those additional lots, but the policy has basically already said that for 50 lots.
I don't know that it says that.
Well, can you clarify? The current policy, does it not say that, I mean, all I understand is that we're adding the International Fire Code Section Appendix Board, or does the section 80103-D-2 already state in order to ensure emergency vehicle access, every subdivision with more than 50 lots should have to at least, oh, so I understand this is access again. But clarify the policy that we have regarding entrances, because that's what we're talking about. Because that's the question, I think, now, that is on the table. I know this is regarding the access, so thank you again for the clarification, but what we're, we still obviously need to get some clarification about, what is the existing policy for additional entrances? And we'll come back to this.
And Chair Wood, our ordinance says that after 50 lots, a second entrance is required, but as a policy, if we have gotten away from that, then we need to address that separately. But this ordinance amendment before you today is to clarify between 30 and 50.
And it's for the access, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Not entrances, but access. Okay. All right, any other comments? I see a hand out there, but we've concluded the public hearing, so it's now communications through the, any other comments or thoughts, discussions? Okay, well, we do have the resolution, I think there were some recommendations made, so the floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we table this, we need to have some more discussion about it, we need to look at some subdivisions that's already been affected by this not being right, or it not being thoroughly investigated of what happens with second phases. I think we need to look at the word entrances and access, because it may be that that subdivision got away with it because it said access, and it didn't say an entrance, and I think words is, language is huge when you're talking about policies, as a lawyer would say. It's all about the language. So I think we need to table it, you know, not not supporting it, Stacy, but table it till we can figure out what was going on with that to make sure that we really do what we need to do. That's my motion.
Motion. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, second. Any further discussions or comments?
I have one question.
Commissioner Barnes?
Just for clarification, so I'll know, the process about the 50 lots, when was that passed? What year and month was that passed?
The ULDC was adopted on September the 15th of 2009, so it's been 10 years.
What month?
September.
September. So this was put in place in 2009 in September?
As far as I'm aware, yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open. I mean, we're all in favor of the motion to table. Okay? All right, and so that's five, and Mr. Thomas has stepped out, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now moving to the next item, and it is going to be presented by our county attorney, Patrick Jockstetter, and it's a resolution to support the locally established build and design standards for residential dwellings.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here we go. So this resolution is something we discussed generally with the legislative delegation during the workshop held a couple of weeks ago. As you are all aware, during the 2019 term of the General Assembly, there was proposed House Bill 302. Now, House Bill 302 is kind of stalled in committee. Nobody knows what's gonna happen with it when the new legislature meets, when the General Assembly reconvenes in about a week. But what House Bill 302 does specifically is it would prohibit local governments from imposing any zoning conditions that would regulate the design standards on single or multifamily properties. And we do that on virtually every single, single-family rezoning. In fact, design standards are built into our ordinance, so even if property is already zoned, we are imposing design standards, things like exterior construction, roof pitch, things like that. The legislature, probably in response to lobbyists, has proposed to prohibit local governments from enacting those types of design standards. As a general rule, this falls within local government zoning powers. Now, local government zoning powers are given to local government through the state. The state has delegated to local governments the power to zone property, and that delegation has come through what we all traditionally know as home rule. Home rule is basically a legal embodiment of the idea that the more local the government is, the more responsive it is likely to be to its citizens. Zoning decisions, I think anyone involved in zoning would recognize, those are best left to local governments. The more separation there is between the citizenry and the zoning decisions, the less likely it is that the zoning bodies, the boards of commissioners, would be responsive to public input. If the General Assembly takes over zoning decisions, there will be no opportunity for people to come and voice opposition and make their concerns known. So what the resolution before you would do would be to urge the General Assembly to refrain from taking any action to deprive local government of their home rule power, specifically with respect to zoning, and specifically with respect to this House Bill 302. The resolution that you have was presented in form very close to what I presented by the ACCG. They distributed it to virtually every local government, asking local government to adopt it. I changed it ever so slightly by adding specific references to House Bill 302, so nobody would have any confusion about what we're talking about. The resolution proposed by the ACC just generally said, "Don't interfere with our home rule powers." I left that bit in our resolution, but I added some specific references to these zoning decisions. So that's the resolution before you today. The plan would be, if the board adopts it, we would then transmit this to our legislative delegation, so that they know when they go back into session how this board of commissioners feels about these types of intrusions into home rule. Questions?
Okay, are there, okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to stress, I did talk with Patrick about this, and asked him to do what he needed to do to strengthen this resolution on our behalf. I have been working very closely with ACCG, with the Policy Committee, about this home rule interference that is being pushed from some of the legislators from South Georgia. And we don't want to give someone in Savannah permission to tell us how to build houses here in Atlanta. Our needs are different, our structure are different, and our communities are different. And that's basically what they are attempting to do, is have that power taken away from the local constituents. And I plan to be, in February, presenting as well in the Capitol to fight against this with ACCG and that committee. So I do want to ask this board of commissioners to consider sending a very strong voice to the Capitol, that we don't need that interference into what's happening in Henry County or any particular area. Every area is very unique in their building requirements. What happens up in the mountains is totally different from what happens here in Henry County, and what happens in Perry, Georgia is totally different from what happens here in Eagles Landing. So this is a very strong message that we'll be sending by joining ACCG campaign to try to stop this movement. And it is a very heavy movement, and it can be very costly to the growth and development here in Henry County.
Thank you. I'm gonna have some comments. Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for those comments. Just to educate our citizens, at the ACCG Legislative Conference, this was a very hot topic that many counties throughout the state were very concerned about, and they are very concerned about the elimination of home rule for build and designs for their communities. So that was definitely something that we have stood with at the ACCG level. Also, we've had some local meetings here with our Henry County Legislative Delegations at the Hometown Connections that was scheduled, and also, the Board of Commissioners had a legislative event, and that was, again, not the number-one item that we spoke about that we wanted them to oppose. We, again, do not want any violation of home rule as it pertains to our local design standards. No one knows more about the community than we do locally, and so, again, this voice has been elevated at all levels and will continue to be elevated, because, again, this is something that we definitely need to oppose, and ask our legislators to do so and continue to do that. So we want to thank all the commissioners who've participated in all of those communications to oppose this legislation. So are there any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move into our public comment section, and before we acknowledge all of our citizens, I have prepared some statements that I'm asked that the county clerk begin to share with those who sign up for public comment going forward. And I just, again, want to welcome everyone who participates in our meetings. This is what this is for. We're here, again, to allow our citizens to actually address the board regarding matters that are published on the agenda and other important items for the Henry County government, and this is a public participation. We do ask that all of those who are wishing to speak during public comments to sign in and complete a public comment speaker form with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. But to ensure a smooth and orderly process, we ask each person who sign up to acknowledge that they, you know, again, that they are going to follow the recommendations that we have for an orderly meeting, and this is what the requests are. The comments are to be addressed to the Board of Commissioners, and we're not asking that individuals' names are called out. There are individuals, whether it's employees, whether it's other citizens, whether it is the staff, we just ask that you please address the board. These meetings are televised. If you have any issues, please reach out to those commissioners. If you have issues with the staff, reach out to the county manager. These things are on public record, but we're here to conduct business as a board of commissioners, and, again, we're just asking that we do so. We ask that you please don't use foul, insulting, derogatory language, naming another citizen, employee, or commissioner, individual. We're also asking that that includes compliments. You know, if you're gonna say, "Don't say anything bad about individuals," I got to be fair in saying, you know, you got to be fair about the complimentary side to it as well, so let's stay focused on the business of the county. So we're asking, again, that during this public comment section, commissioners, we're doing a good job, let's allow our citizens to come forward without interrupting them, because they have the floor, they have an opportunity to express their thoughts regarding county business, and, again, we're just asking that we conduct ourselves in the order by which that we're asking for, so that we are professional, that we're also respectful. And so at this time, I'll look over to the county clerk. Again, the speakers will be called in the order in which they sign up to speak, and so what I'll ask of the county clerk is, once the first speaker is called to the podium, then you just announce the next one, so that that person will be getting ready, so that, again, we are moving in an orderly fashion. So, again, how many public comments do we have today? And I do ask that we all just respect these requests for an orderly meeting.
We have four public comments today. First one is Bill Tony.
Thank you. And if you will state your name, sir, thank you. And everyone will be given a total of five minutes, so thank you.
Okay, before we start, my name is Bill Tony McDonough. Due to being escorted out at the last meeting, if you would, would you please turn off the clock? I'd like to ask for a motion to extend my time 15 to 15 minutes, if I could get that done, because I don't think I can put it all in five minutes. I'm asking the chairman if you would take a vote to extend my five minutes to 15 minutes.
So at this time, we ask that you use the time that you have, and once you're done, I would like to stop and acknowledge the board and ask that question. But if you'll use the time that's been granted, that's our guidelines.
All right, if you would. Stephanie?
One to Jane Wood.
One to Ms. Clemmons.
What this is, this is a code of conduct for a commissioner. Now, I was attacked, I feel like, pretty hard after I made my statement about properties. I did not say anything about removing anybody, I didn't say anything. I just brought it to the attention of the board, that we have a house, we're renting out for $200 a month to county employees that have an income of over $80,000. Now, Ms. Clemmons was...
I ask that you just talk to the board, if you will, sir, just talk about the process. So thank you, because I don't want names called. Thank you.
She attacks me, and a commissioner attacks me and says that I'm going to throw out a veteran. I'm not wanting to throw anybody out. I said nothing about throwing anybody out. All right, when you engage in a conversation with me, that is a dialogue, so I have the right to speak back. Now, I can talk to y'all, and you can talk to me, but we do not, if you accuse me of something that's a blatant lie, after I leave this podium, then I don't have the right of defending myself. Only right I have is the next meeting, and what happened to me the last time was totally uncalled for. I came up here, I laid my case out, I thought I was nice, I didn't say anything out of the way to anybody, and then when commissioner time to speak, then I was accused of everything, which was all a lie, and I was attacked. And when the commissioner said, "You're not gonna come in here," that was, "you" means "me," and that was a dialogue. So I didn't have the opportunity to come back up here and defend myself off of a lie. I never said to throw anybody out. Now, if everybody, this right here, I was asked to leave. You gavelled me. I understand that. Commissioner, she, you gavelled her, because she kept going. How come she wasn't asked to leave? This is like a double standard here. I have a right to stand here and talk, and she has a right to stand here and talk. I don't have a problem with that. Now, she, Commissioner...
I ask that you please remove the picture, because it shows...
No, 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 this was on the newspaper.
Can I have someone to, please remove the picture, Mr. Tony? I've just asked for you to please address the concern. I think some of the things you're saying are things that we need to listen to, but I ask, please do not name individuals, please.
Let me see, when this newspaper article came out, Ms. Clemmons said, and I quote, "I will, with citizens having the right to complain, just give me a chance to respond." That's what she asked for this. Now, all I'm asking you, and all these people ask, is if you're gonna say something about us, then give us the chance to respond. That's all I'm asking, because what way I was attacked, I'm telling you, it was not right. It was not right at all, and I hope y'all feel that way. Now, y'all sit there and you just ignore everything and just hope we all go away. That's not the way it works. We are citizens of this county. We pay taxes, and I want to see, I'm gonna investigate you, I'm gonna investigate everything. The county, that's what we do, you know? We were not supposed to be...
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a moment?
Okay, there has been a request to extend the time by Mr. Tony. The floor is now open for a motion to extend the time. Again, asking for a motion to extend the time. Hearing none, seeing none, that concludes your public comments. Thank you, Mr. Tony. Okay, our next person, please, if you will call them forward.
John Page.
You want my address as well?
You don't have to.
267 Fanning Lane, McDonough, Georgia.
Thank you.
In rebutting, what, a little minute ago, your issue regarding your fire lanes, add to your item that you want to add to that agenda when you review it, what do you do if somebody comes in and builds a 400 home development? How many entrances are you gonna require then? Ask you what the traffic jam is gonna be like. Again, I... Again, I've been up here a number of times. I was rejected and removed last meeting, and the other gentleman was asked to leave as well due to my statement, as far as, and that was unjust to him. And again, it's one of the things that's occurring with the commissioners, that you are taking upon yourself in deciding that we only have five minutes or three minutes to speak, depending on your agenda. But everybody else that comes up with a building proposal or anything else has got unlimited time to speak. And that's not fair. And out of that, as far as you've got developers, like I say, that come in and they've taken advantage of the residents of this community, and you've allowed it to devalue their properties by allowing multiple homes being built neighboring larger developments, which larger homes, I know a couple of you have lived on large properties, but as far as, there's no close proximity of your homes to have large developments built to devalue your homes. Okay? So it doesn't affect you. Again, these are items we're asking as far as, as residents of the area, for a moratorium to be put into place, that you take time, six months at least, to reevaluate what you're allowing to be built. It's overpopulating sections of the town that cannot handle it and will need to be totally readjusted in schools, in fire, in safety, as far as that you are not prepared to perform or have ready. Roadways are going beyond recognition as far as where they're going and what they're doing. The proposal back in October in 2017, to take the McDonough Parkway and complete it from 155 to 20, State Road 20, and reroute it as a truck route. In the midst of that, you're now building homes and apartments along that route, and you've got two major elementary schools in that area. Your road that was never built as it was designed for four lanes, you're building a two-lane road, and you're adding more safety issues that you can't imagine are gonna occur. And you're not going to get trucks to drive 5.7 miles instead of 3.2 miles. They are not going to follow your direction. And when their roads are damaged, they are now secondary county roads, which we have to pay to maintain, instead of the state. Because the state is not going to take McDonough Parkway because it doesn't meet state requirements and state codes or federal codes. So those issues are totally allowed by you people, sitting up there as commissioners and making these decisions without adequate information from your people in the different departments that are not qualified to be where they're at. And I ask, if you can't provide a moratorium for a period to review what totally is being done, please resign from your position. If not, and I'll be back next meeting, and I'll ask again, and I'll be starting a recall for six commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Larry Maury.
You know, three years ago and four months, I came forward to this board, and I said, "We got problems with potholes all over this county, and this is the way you can fix them." Never heard anything back. Nobody, DOT, your local pavement, none of you guys. You know, when water penetrates the pavement, over a period of time, it under, it hollows out underneath, and the pavement gives away, and then you got holes. Well, in your infinite wisdom, you send these people out there with this tar, and they pour hot tar in there, level, level the hole, and away they go. Well, there's a problem with that. The subsurface is weak and non-existent in some places, so that tar you put in there sinks down again. You've got another hole, another water reservoir, another beating out. Now it's starting to beat out around that hole. There's a simple way to fix that. If you'll stop a little bit longer and hole out and put a basis in there of gravel or some other structure. And then, if you're gonna pour hot tar, fill it, the hole up, and you're gonna fill it level, natural compaction is gonna make it go down an inch. If you would take one-inch granite and hole, just spread it over that tar, it will keep it from sinking down and becoming a reservoir to hold water again. Just simple stuff like that. And especially places where you can use smaller gravel and hot tar, where the surface is starting to crack. But if you don't know what's wrong, you don't know how to fix what's wrong. That's what the gentleman that we just heard speak. So many times, you've allowed something to happen, and these building developers, they're not stupid. They know if they hold one lot out of a 30-unit development, and when they get through with that, and then it sells good, they're gonna make another road, because they're gonna, they already either own that property, or they know they can buy that property. And all they gotta do is keep, and they don't have to build no more entrances in these sales and next sales. They've already made a quarter million dollars. They've already made a quarter million dollars, because they're not stupid, because nobody understands what they're doing, because you're not paying attention. You know, here's my problem, and I can talk real quiet if I have to. You don't hear. You hear nothing. You see nothing. There is nothing. There's nothing going on. So if you can't hear, and you can't see, then there's nothing wrong. Do we understand that? You know, you, you don't want nothing. You don't want nobody to come up here and talk about what's wrong. There used to be a thing, "Come by y'all." We'd get together in the, in the, I didn't, because I didn't smoke dope. But a lot of my friends did smoke dope, and they'd get around a fire, and they'd sing "Come by y'all," and talk about how peace and love and drugs and... Is that what we do in here in Henry County? Or are we gonna address our problems? I've never had one of you to come talk about what I've complained about and a ways to fix it. Not one. I've made a lot of offers of good government, positive improvement, but I've never had one of you to come ask. I've had, I've had them to condemn me and throw me out and not listen to what I said, condemn me because I speak loud, but I know what I'm doing. Smart government in ACCG, you talk about that, don't you? Smart growth initiatives is named after what I presented to the state of Georgia on how to build subdivisions. And I'm building one right now, 2,800 acres. I know what I'm doing. I'm not playing games. Hear nothing, see nothing. There must not be nothing. So keep setting. It's gonna fix itself.
Thank you.
We have a senior, Robert Kolpak. Robert Kolpak, 272 Cottin Indian Creek Road, McDonough, Georgia, 30252. This is, this picture's from Hen Valley Park. Been working on it since May, and in the course of this time, the fence has been removed. I've asked for it to be put in, because there is a thing near the playground. It hasn't been done, and there's supposed to be something else being done. And I asked, why not put a temporary fence there to protect it? There was a fence there, temporary fence goes back up. And in the time of that happening, they fenced up the basketball court, then they removed the fencing at the basketball court, then completely removed the basketball court. And also at the other park, Village Park in District Five, they added a putting green. I'm not sure, we say we're worried about safety concerns. This is a safety concern. It's a very small, marginal thing I would like to be put in place at that park. It hasn't been done. Speaking of that park, $400,000 was asked to repair that park at the last commissioners' meeting, because it fell into disrepair. Now, if you've only been in office one year, that would make a, I would be almost understanding how it would fall into disrepair, but I'm glad somebody's addressing that park now. But $400,000 in District Five Park for repairs is pretty sad. When then you go to the Cochrane Park fiasco, I call it, from July, $550,000 plus to repair because we never took care of it. I'm glad that we hired, is it Mr. Penn, to be over the parks, and the comprehensive park plan has been what I've been asking for, for since last year. And the, in our District Five spending, we've, we've added a beautiful park there, and it's not conducive to the other two parks, but we've added one, spent a bunch of millions of dollars there, and have added one medical building. So it's not a lot of return on investments. As far as apartments and others, they don't add as much value as a house, but also businesses. And one thing I saw in the paper, won't mention anybody's names, but it was something about basic negotiations with City of Stockbridge, person caved, and how do we trust somebody with zero wins, three, four years, just promises, the set priorities? Nothing gets funded. Glad that Cochrane Park's behind us. I'm looking forward to tremendous future for Henry County. Well, the thing on negotiations, if you're given a turd, it's really hard to sell it. If you're giving something very nice to the City of Stockbridge, and you give them a beautiful park and say, "Here it is," without conditions, it's like giving you a broken car and saying, "Hey, it's gonna cost you $10,000 to repair it." If you don't have the $10,000, there's no sense in spending the money. So appreciate that. It was moved on to reopen and repair. I know that we're number two in project funding for maintenance. We have more preconstruction going on in any other county in the state, and we've added a bunch of fire police equipment for them, which is definitely excellent. And I think we've had a lot of wins. One win we need to get is probably that Bethlehem Road, where we do, instead of having a 3-3 vote, release the pressure off the 155. There's some low-hanging fruit out there that if we could work together as a group and win for this county, not one district and not one person. It's not election time, it's not as, it was put in the paper, political. If you think that, that's sad, because what it is, it's about what's doing the right thing. So the commissioners that I talk to and speak back, I appreciate your guys' time and education and a lot of things. I get a lot of insight from you guys, so I do appreciate you talking to me offside and understanding where we're at, because in government, nothing moves fast, right? So as long as we have a plan and we go after it, comprehensive park plan will help. Also, these conditions on, up in the state, I hope to God they never get in charge of what our buildings would be, because it's rough now. I can't imagine what it would be then. Thank you for y'all's time, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, well, that concludes our public comments, but I want to take a point of privilege now to, again, reemphasize what our public comment section is and will continue to be. As always, this is the time for our public to participate and to express their thoughts and concerns regarding our Henry County government or agenda items. I am asking that you please do not call out individuals anymore. Let's speak to the board during these meetings. If you have issues that you want to speak with them individually, please do reach out to those as well. Again, if you have some concerns around the staff, talk to the county management team about that. And again, as the public comments are coming, there are notes being made as to what is being stated. And again, we ask that you help us as we continue to focus on the county government business. There is lots of things that has been done. We saw the hearing report by the county manager. We also know that there is much more work to be done, but let's, together, focus on the county government business and be respectful to each other. Now, I do, again, ask that when you do come, let's continue to focus on the county business. We ask that the commissioners not interrupt, and if you have, you know, some concerns with even the constituents, please, you know, address them as to be stated. But again, this is an opportunity for us to stay focused on where, where we are and where we are to go. I do, again, say that the reason I am making such an emphasis today is because I still understand that we are representing Henry County, our citizens, our image and so forth. And again, I will gavel if I begin to hear that there is outcry when I ask people to please be quiet, or if you are not listening to what we ask, so that we can conduct business. So again, I just ask that we continue in this way. Stephanie, as the county clerk, I ask that we take this and we share it with those who are signing up for public comments, so as a reminder, and we can go and pull the statements from our ordinances as well regarding public comment participation. But again, this is the opportunity for our citizens to participate, and that has always been the case. But we're just asking how you do it, be done in a way so that it is respectful to all. And again, I ask that the commissioners do the same, in that we listen and also follow up where appropriate. So at this time now, we will now move into the approval of the minutes for our November 5th regular Board of Commissioners meeting and our November 19th Board of Commissioner meetings, where there are any revisions to those minutes. Seeing none, hearing none. The floor is now open for the approval of those minutes.
We'll move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved unanimously. So at this time, we'll open the floor up to any of the commissioners for any comments at this time. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Sherri, I don't know if we should have done this during county manager comments, but I think Brad was working on this, but I need an update on those lights on Jonesboro Road. It'll be helpful to have a schedule and figure out what's going on with that, as well as the extension of those lights on the roads. And I think once we get that, it'll kind of give me some guidelines of the other dark roads that we have in Henry County, what the process would be when there's not, it's not a subdivision and the street lights doesn't apply. So that would be helpful, but we need to get that update. I would like, Sherri, if you would, reach out to the mayor of McDonough. He's wanting to have a discussion. We briefly had an unofficial discussion about the courthouse. Commissioners, we gotta go back to, what are we gonna do about the courthouse? But McDonough is really eager to work with us, and I think that's an amazing thing, and that's what we want to continue to do, about how do we keep the courthouse on the square, and how do they do, come in with some part of it. Commissioner Berman and I will be working with them on that and asking other commissioners to please be involved in that conversation. We need to talk about that before the budget, because we can't go to sleep as if we don't need a new courthouse. The Western Parallel Connector, Patrick, we're still waiting on the land donations and what the process would be. Those landowners are asking, you know, what do they need to do to assign that land over to us?
Yeah, so as a brief update on that, we have to make sure with the DOT, with Georgia DOT, that we don't acquire that land too early. So I'll get with Rocky, I don't know if he's around today, but I'll get with Rocky and make sure, see where he is with that. Georgia DOT sometimes has heartburn over advanced acquisitions, so we just need to make sure we're, we're not gonna run afoul of their rules on that.
Okay, so get a date, because when they're calling, we need to be able to say, you know, hold on to it, you know, maybe there's a process or something that they need to do before maybe giving us the legal description of the land or whatever, something, because we want to be ready. We don't want to spend another three years trying to get the Western Parallel Connector done. We want to get moving. Because guess what? The amount that it's gonna cost is gonna continue to go up, so I want us to expeditiously get that moving. And then that'll take care of it for me.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? I've got one, two items. Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to welcome Mr. Penn to our regime here, but we're looking forward to working with you. And one of the things I'd like for you to put on your agenda, I have mentioned this already to our deputy county manager, and I've had a discussion kind of informally with a couple of commissioners, but I would like for you all to take it and make it a formal discussion. But I'm very interested in bringing a national disc golf tournament to Henry County. I have talked with the disc golf guru in Georgia. He has a very convincing story of things they've done around the country, and our parks are very conducive to disc golf. I know one of my parks is already set up and planning to upgrade it, and upgrade another one in District Four. upgrade it and upgrade another one in District Four, but I'd like to see us as commissioners look at how to bring the national tournament to Henry County. We have enough parks available. The cost to make it happen is not that impeding, and I would love for you to put that high on your list and work with our deputy county manager to make that happen. So I went out to do any more research, basically. So you do the research for us and bring it back to us, and tell us how we can work and put together a plan from park to park for disc golf, and the ultimate goal is to bring the nationals to Henry County. It would be a very economically strong boost to our economy, and if we make it something, even we have a Henry County tournament as the nationals goes around, it can definitely help our county out and help our parks and recreation make more money. So thank you.
Okay, my comments are probably going to be directed to our county attorney this evening, if not before, but by the February morning meeting, could we have an update on the status of the service delivery strategy? I know there's been a lot of progress if you, so if you just allow us to, you know, have some update regarding that. And then the other request that I have for our county attorney as well is that we need to begin some progress or process, and I know it may be a long journey, on how we're going to begin updating a lot of our policies and ordinances, reviewing those and developing some way to update those if they're out of date. So if you began thinking about some recommendations back to the board of how we actually address that when we hear our policies that have existed since 2009, I mean, I know it's going to, we've got tons of policies, ordinances and things like that, but if we can at least begin some process to update those, those are my requests in that regard.
So I can really briefly speak to SDS. Nothing has really changed since, you know, probably the last morning meeting because of the holidays and all of that kind of stuff, but we do feel like my conversations with the county manager make me feel like we are almost there. She and I are trying to find a day that we can set aside and just she and I go through everything and knock out, knock out the documentation and have that ready to be distributed to the board and to all the cities. We, you know, right now, I think, I think between Sherri and Brad, they have resolved, at least from a business standpoint, all the tricky issues. So we'll just have to make sure we can pigeonhole those business issues into the SDS format, which that's what we do, so we'll make sure that happens. As far as policies and ordinances, I can certainly work on that. Now, one of the difficult things about updating policies and ordinances, and I'll use one as an example, not to disagree with the board whether it needs to be updated or not, but, you know, our purchasing policy was adopted in '16, and we've heard a lot of, a lot of concern from the board about the purchasing policy. So I would suggest that the identification of policies that the board is dissatisfied with should probably come before either myself or county management identifies policies that need to be updated. We try, when we find one that needs to be updated, we try to update those, just sort of in the regular course of business. But we will certainly look at, I'll certainly spend some time looking at policies, and I'll discuss with county management and with board members as we identify those that we think perhaps aren't satisfactory to the board, and start that journey. But you're right, I think that could, you know, that could blossom into a really big, a really big project, because a lot of times, if you touch one section of the code because of the way our code cross-references, and sometimes it works together, sometimes it doesn't, we're going to have to make sure that we identify other places that it changes and bring those, bring those up into a way that's satisfied the board's desires as well. But we can certainly get started on that.
Yeah, and the request was for a process-
Right.
-that you would be recommending back to us, and also regarding SDS. I'm glad to hear that we're making some progress, but at the February meeting, if we have not resolved, we need a more detail of what the pending issues are-
Sure.
-and more importantly, how the board, what action the board may need to take as well. Okay? All right. Any other comments from, okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask county manager, please. I need an update, and hopefully you will share this with the entire board, on the status of Connecting Henry. I'm hearing some infractions of information from them. What's going to be the relationship between Connecting Henry and the board going forward? People talking about their pay, working and not getting paid, and things have changed drastically now that Ms. Cromley has gone her way. So we need to really get an update as to actually what is happening over there, and what would we, what responsibilities are we assuming, and what that relationship would be defined as, okay? In addition to that, I also would like to know when, if you would let us know what to expect from, or when would be our next strategic meeting after we've had the two-day strategic meeting, I don't know what you call that meeting that we had. What's going to be the next step of that? When do you have in that meeting so that we can stay on course of getting to our count of excellence? So if you give that back to us, I certainly would appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none. We're moving to our next item, which relates to our upcoming meetings. Our next meeting will be January the 21st at 6:30 PM, which is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and then following that, we'll have our February 4th, 9 o'clock regular Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll look over to the county attorney. Are there any executive session items today?
Not for today, no.
Okay, so we have no executive session items today, so anything else for the good of the group? Seeing none, hearing none. We accept a motion to adjourn.
It's approved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other matters? All in favor to adjourn? Thank you, and thank you all for your participation, those in here and also those online. Thank you.